This conference will now be recorded.
So continuing after that, so with the summer slowing down, I am working in Caliber, which is our system that runs everyone as their owners and gives us all the information we need. And one of the things I'm working on is the emails. We have a bunch of emails that are not accurate anymore for the homeowner, and so I'm just getting an updated list of everybody who needs to change it. So if you do need to change it, there will be a non-dynamic form being sent out through Neighbor that you can go in and change it, just like we did with the phone numbers within the next couple of weeks. So if you could be expecting that and make the changes necessary. Oh, and something will also go in your mailboxes. So other than that, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, a couple of updates I have, and then I'll pass it on to Mike. As you all may or may not know, the monument wall has been, is being worked on as we speak. It is being lifted at about two more feet, so it'll be about six feet high. And if you haven't already seen it, it looks huge compared to what it used to look like. So we're hoping to get that done within the next probably month it should be completed. And in my opinion, it's going to look wonderful. Instead of having Happy Trails on the side, it's going to be right smack in the middle of that monument. So roof repairs, we are almost finished with our roof repairs. They are finishing up at NC-1. They have completed Town Center, and they've completed over the chuck wagon here. So NC-1 is going to be completed. They should be completed probably by the end of this week, maybe early next week. But look forward to that. In the roof repairs at NC-1 is also during that time, we're also doing the flooring at NC-1. That is the reason NC-1 has been closed. If you get a chance, peek inside and see what they're doing. It looks beautiful. Instead of having carpet, we're going to have wood, what is it called? Like vinyl-type wood-looking flooring, but it looks beautiful. They're probably about, I don't know, they're done, but if you peek inside, you can see what it's going to look like. I'm going to turn it over to Mike and let him give you some updates on some other things going on.
Hello, everyone. I think I know everyone in the audience here, all the wonderful faces enduring the heat with us. I don't have a ton of stuff going on. As we know, there's a lot of projects. Darlene had hit on a few in regards to things that are happening throughout the resort. We have this ambition to really get a lot of things done over the summer months and really improve some of our major things throughout the resort. A lot of projects happening, the roofing, the asphalt. I do want to touch on the asphalt a little bit. In our last Friday blast, I had sent out a little bit of a notification saying, hey, we're getting to this point. Package 4 is going to be Section 4. That's the area that we're going to fully reconstruct, and that's going to be the, I would say, the most extensive portion of the reconstruction of that project. That's going to be an area that we start with first. So next Monday, on the 10th, we have a pre-con meeting with Copper State. At that point in time, we plan to finalize their maps, their plans, and everything so that we can send them out to the community. We're looking to potentially start milling the valley gutter throughout Section 4 beginning the 17th of June. So that's coming mid-June. It's not going to be very abrasive for a lot of our residents in that area. We're going to come through, and we're going to mill the center of the road and have them come through and pour that valley gutter, that concrete gutter. And then on each side of the gutter, the existing asphalt will maintain until that valley gutter is cured. Then we'll come back through, mill each side of it, and come back and pave the road in that area. So throughout this entire process, we are going to maintain access 110%. Even after they mill each side of the road there, we'll bank up the valley gutter in the center so that if you have to cross over, you can drive up over the valley gutter and onto the other side of the road. So we'll plan that all out accordingly. Included in that will be the reconstruction to Section 4. We're going to be seal coating Section 9. That was done two years ago now. So we're going to be seal coating that section. We're going to be doing some work on Trigger. There's some drainage problems on the, would be the, I believe, south side of Trigger. And so that side's going to be milled. We'll maintain access in each direction going down to Package 1. And then we're going to be doing an area that is, has some drainage problems on the corner of Wrangler and Roy Rogers. However, we'll maintain access through Nellie Bell at all times. And then we're also going to do the entrance to the ranch, and the entrance we're going to pave to South Storage. So there's going to be a lot of that going on throughout this summer, but I don't think it's really going to be in anyone's way. I will be the primary contact for any kind of emergencies or accessibility issues, folks that need to get out or get in with their recreational vehicles. Those are the biggest things because getting a 45-foot coach across a valley gutter in an area that's been milled across might be a little challenging depending on scheduling. So if you do have any plans and you know you're going to be affected in those areas, please don't hesitate to reach out to me and let me know when you're leaving, when you're coming back, so we can try to coordinate that with the crew. We will make it happen for you guys. Our primary goal is to make sure you have accessibility to your homes, and I really don't have any hesitations there. But just see that coming forward. We're going to have signs, A-frame boards that are put out through the community, a timeline for when this is starting, when this is finishing. Everything will be out there. I'm anticipating having that out no later than the 10th or 11th when we have that pre-con meeting. So you'll see that coming soon. That's just one of the few things. We are having the solid wall that's behind, directly behind us in this Bay Area behind the dog park. They have started working on that as of yesterday. So you'll see the contractors in that area framing, doing some of that work by the dog park. It will remain accessible as well. We're just going to have more material in that area. That's going to be completely solid back here, so we have more storage for the fellowship and for the association to maintain some of their assets that are out in that area. So lots and lots and lots of improvements going on, and we're really excited to get to a season and show everyone what beautiful things have been done throughout the season.
We're also going to be getting new street signs for throughout, we're getting new everywhere. We're not going to just hit, pick and choose. We're going to do all new street signs. So that should be done here shortly. It's really going to depend on how long the vendor's going to take to make them all because there are quite a bit. When we do those street signs, we do realize some of those streets are spelled wrong, so they will be spelled correctly this time. And we will have, the vendor will make them for us, and they will install them for us. We'll go ahead and open up for some questions now, right now.
What is the font going to be on those street signs? Some of them that have been replaced from the original ones are so dinky you can't read them.
I'm not sure exactly what size it's going to be. We'll be working with the vendor on that, but we will definitely make sure they're not too small so we can all read them.
Thank you.
As well as completely reflective. All of them are going to be completely reflective as well. So we have a couple proofs right now. That's where we're at with fast signs. They sent us a couple proofs on what we want to do before we make some final cuts on what exactly is going to happen. So that's where we're at with things. We're getting the ball rolling and removing those and getting those situated. And we do anticipate that some of the, some of the signs that we do have are in fair condition, so we're going to pull those down and keep those. And maybe we'll do something cool with them at some point in time. Yeah, maybe we'll do them in some kind of... The multidirectional signs, remind me.
Okay, so where we talked about maybe like at Trigger, we'd have a multidirectional sign that said, "To the right, NC-1," but straight ahead would be Town Center, that would be in the center for people.
Direction, yeah, directional signs. We're talking some directional signs as well in regards to coming in the front gate and getting to NC-2. You know, if you're a newer resident, or you have a guest, or someone, whoever it may be, there's not a whole lot of general direction when you're coming down the boulevard on where to go to what building. So we're looking at having more directional signs at NC-2 this way, NC-1 this way, at those intersections that are visible.
Going back to the size of the font, by the way, is one of the new signs, the one on the corner of Happy Trails and Roy Rogers?
No, nothing has been replaced at this point in time.
Because that one is very small.
Yeah, we did have, it looks like we kind of have a hodgepodge of, you know, some different signs throughout. Darlene and I drove yesterday. We're looking at, we have some brown ones, we have some green ones still, and some font are real small, some font are real big. So we want them to be completely cohesive throughout the entire community and match and look nice. So we're going to have them all remade to be really beautiful.
So we thought of an idea with the old signs. We thought maybe activity users or someone may want to auction them off because some residents may want a, you know, like that, want the sign where they live. So that's an idea we're going to, we made and go with after we get all the new signs put up.
Good morning. Do we know where we are with the chuck wagon contract?
I'm going to let Becca talk about because that's a board thing.
We've completed negotiations, and the contract is signed. Five-year contract with Chef Peter.
The homeowners get a chance to look at this, or do we have any ability to look at it?
It was decided by the board. I mean, I don't, I don't think we publish those, do we?
What other contracts do we have with an onsite vendor that you would actually publish anyway? You know, what I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to figure out if the chuck wagon is an amenity or not.
That is a question that's going to be out there to be asked of all our residents. Is he's just a contractor? Is this an actual amenity for Happy Trails or not? That's kind of the question that will be posed, and there will be an opportunity for all residents to answer that question.
And the only reason I'm bringing it up is, we were told a couple of years ago, sitting at the board meeting, that the chuck wagon could generate $60,000 to $90,000 a year in income for our community. And I'm just wondering if that's not going to happen, and will it become an amenity? Which, in other words, we support the amenity in our common charges.
They are covering their costs. I can say right now that in the near future, there will not be a lot of money coming in, but they are covering their costs.
But we really don't know their costs at this moment because we don't know how much electricity is.
That is being worked on as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or anything anyone would like to bring up at this time?
Hi, maybe this is for Mike. Maybe this is for Mike. Do we have any update on what AT&amp;T is doing with their pile of dirt?
Oh, yes. Hey, AT&amp;T and their pile of dirt. So initially, they, I was told right before I went on vacation, I had a really, really interesting conversation with AT&amp;T because they decided they were going to drop all that block and rebar in the middle of our parking lot. So I had a, I had an interesting conversation with them and said, hey, what are you doing? This might be your tower, but this is not your parking lot. Of course, they came out, they moved the block to the further part of the parking lot and said, yeah, we'll be out next week to do that installation. I do have a call out to them right now and said, hey, where are you, where are you at? What are we doing? Because I still haven't seen anybody out there doing anything. So, you know, they're, they're beating to their own drum in regards to that location. They do own that location. I know that we're trying to deal with that on top of it. Looks like they are adding on with the block. They're going to be extending that block wall so they can add additional devices within that, that space for your 5G needs or whatever they're doing to upgrade their tower. So they have more material that has to go in that. So they're going to be building that block wall where that trench is there, and that's what's, that's ultimately what's happening there. So they are going to proceed throughout, you know, throughout the summer, but I'm pushing and pushing to try to get them done as soon as possible.
I've, I've noticed that we're painting lines on the road. Are they also doing the signs, like the stop or yield, making those bigger? I think you were talking about that, right?
Yeah, we have a lot of street painting to do this summer. I mean, we've slowly been working on some of the normal street, you know, lines for the golf cart passes and the pedestrian passes, but yeah, we have a lot of work to do yet still. I mean, we have to do all of the stop lines. We want to do some of the speed limit things that came out from the Safety Committee over this last season. So there's going to be some speed limit signs that are actually painted onto the entrance area along the boulevard that tells you 20 miles an hour. It's going to be big, it's going to be bold, and we're hoping that these are going to help make a difference for our upcoming season with traffic control. But we do have a lot of painting to still do throughout this summer. Some of the signs and things like that that weren't in the right places and still need to be moved. So we have a pretty, pretty long list of things to still complete, and hopefully these next few months do go by slow so we can, we can get it all completed.
Vicki Griffiths, Lot 1408. And I want to say thank you for painting that on the streets because it really makes a big difference, I'm sure. But anyway, many of you are on Facebook, right? And you probably saw Judy Kohler's comment about if you're a resident or if you're a renter, the classification. Well, guess what? Mine is a renter status. So, yeah, and there's many, many people that have found that. So get your tax papers out and look at what the status is for your, your property because if you're considered a renter, you're paying more in tax, okay? Another thing is, is that if they find out that you are a renter and you have not, let's see, how was that? Anyway, you could be fined up to $150 a day if they find out that you are in a wrong status. So, but anyway, then the other thing too, I'm going down tomorrow to get mine changed. I did call them, I looked on my papers, and I am a four, which is renter status. So what I'm going to do tomorrow is go down to the city taxpayer's place, and I did call them the other day, and sure enough, I am a renter. But I'm going to also go down because, for one thing, I need to get my husband's name off of the, off of the house too, because he did pass away two and a half years ago. But also, you can get your taxes frozen if you are over 65. So that's something to look into. And you have to take your driver's license. I've got all my stack of everything to prove what, that I am a resident here full-time. Property tax, property tax, yeah, sorry. Anyway, anybody have any questions? Okay, you get your, you get your property tax papers out, and right here, it'll say if it's a three or four. Also, another thing to think about too, is that I get two tax documents, okay? Because we owned our lot, so we were paying taxes on that, and then we put in our snuggle wide, so then they have another tax paper coming to you. So one could be a three, and what could be a four?
Did they, did they say why?
That's what I'm trying to figure out. Why in the world did they even make me out as a renter?
Sure.
No. I moved here from Oregon, and we were Oregon residents for, well, so I've been here for 20 years. Okay, we lived in Sun City West when we first got here, okay? And then we sold those homes, we had two, and we sold those homes and went full-time touring around the country. Had a blast. Anyway, then we bought, we came here and rented the first year and a half, and then we bought our property, our lot. And we parked our, our motorhome on it, okay? And then seven years ago in September, that is when we put the snuggle wide on. And in the meantime, we also moved to Arizona Traditions. So I have no clue as to how or what. Yes?
I have the same case when we put our snuggle on our lot, and I worked with the tax department to get those two things.
Right, that's what I'm going to do too. Yeah, that's what I'm going to do too. So I have, I have actually four things I need to take care of down at the Maricopa Tax Accountant's Place tomorrow. And they, Molly and Dale Hannan, I don't know if you know them or not, but they went down last week, and they said it was real simple. They had several windows open, and of course, you have to go through a security, so if you have a gun in your purse or whatever, take it out. I don't have anything like that or a knife, whatever. But anyway, they said that it was really super simple. When I talked to the gal the other day, she said that she could email me it, which she did. She emailed it to me, and then I thought, no, I have all this other stuff to take care of too. And I've been going to do it, but you know how you're going to do it and going to do it, and it's not one of the big priorities. So, so anyway, but what I would recommend you to do is to go home and look on here, and you can even call them and find out what the status actually is.
So I take you, you want to contact Maricopa County Assessors?
It's, yeah, it's on your paperwork, okay? Just call on your paperwork and let them know what your parcel number is and everything. So, but it might save you some money. I know that one gal on the Facebook said that she got $500 back for, oh, and they go back three years. Anyway, she said that she got $500 back for a two-year period. Another one of my neighbors, she got $2,000 back.
Wow.
So can you imagine what she was paying?
Sure.
So just be aware, because, you know, I didn't pay attention before. This, this has to be your primary residence, and you have to also have an Arizona driver's license. So.
We got a question back here?
If you or someone has to sell your property at some point, if it, if they've got it listed wrong, it'll affect your capital gains situation. So it's very important that you look at that also.
Okay, I was just going to say that with, with that status that Vicki's talking about, it's important to check on that because if they have that wrong, and if you ever sell your property or someone has to sell it for you, and the status is wrong, it'll affect your capital gains if it's considered a rental opposed to your primary residence.
Okay, any other questions on that? I just wanted to share that because I thought it was such valuable information, and I want to thank Judy Kohler for even bringing that to our attention, so.
I think we'll put that out in the blast as well. I mean, it's good information to have, and we would love an update from you maybe in the next month or so and see how, how it was for you and what, what steps you had to go through in particular and whatnot.
Well, I'm taking another gal with me that, she's got the same thing. She has an Arizona room plus, plus a park model. And she looked on hers, we went to lunch yesterday, and when she got home, she looked, and she said that one of her tax papers says it's a three, another tax paper says it's a four.
Interesting. I know to kind of piggyback on that too, there's a lot of this that we see through the DRC office. I'm sure Bradley still sees it. I know I did when I was in the DRC office. But the Maricopa County Assessors, a lot of the times, will have you improperly labeled your, your home, meaning a lot of these homes within the resort, they label as manufactured homes. So if you have a stick-built home, an Arizona room, and they're, they're taxing you as a manufactured home, it may not be a bad situation for you specifically in this situation as the Arizona room might be a little bit more expensive to tax. But depending on how that is, especially when it comes down to refinancing, there's a lot of situations where we're getting, we're getting calls in the architectural office from lenders saying, hey, we need plans, this is a manufactured home, we can't refi on it. And we have to argue constantly that this is, this is not a manufactured home, this is a stick-built home, or this is that. So there's a lot of that that's going on, a lot of confusion from Maricopa County on what exactly our structures are. They do come through and look at our structures on a, an annual basis, probably biannual basis. I know that I've seen Maricopa County come in before, I've actually rode with them before. They're not that detailed, I'll be frank with you. They drive by, they peek at it, and say, yep, looks like there's a carport and a house. And they have a little map, they draw a rectangle on, and they bill you for it. So if you do have those problems, and it's not taxed, it's not billed right, don't hesitate to call Maricopa County and try to get that hashed out because we're constantly trying to address those issues with, with residents and help you out with those. We do have a lot of the original plans on file for all of your structures, your properties in the DRC office. So if we cross that bridge and you need documentation, we very well may have it.
Thank you. Judy Hood, 486. We, county come out, he measured, Chris was the fellow from county, he measured everything. And they're going to, because that same thing happened to us. And so now, I guess when this Happy Trails was, Maricopa didn't know it was going to be so big and how the building was going to go out here. But now ours is a stick-built, and they're going to classify it now as a cottage as opposed to, because it had a, you know, manufactured home. So they're changing a lot of things, and that's all true about getting a refund and freezing your taxes. And we tried to change homeowner's insurance or something, and they didn't even know, they thought we had, and we have a full cover of everything. And they, the people look at your building on satellite, and they said that, no, you have asphalt, you know, so go down there and get, talk to somebody and do it. I mean, they were really good, they came out, and they are changing everything. And, but it's a hodgepodge of what people have down here, and they don't know. But they, they're really good to deal with. We had an excellent time with them.
Wonderful, thank you. There is a question here. How does this tax issue apply if residing in AZ for six months out of the year? I believe Vicki did say that you do have to be a full-time Arizona resident for this to apply.
I'm always behind on the question, but the other question, going back to the AT&amp;T, is there any talk with or about Wired coming in?
There is. There is some talk in regards to fiber in general. I wouldn't say wired, but fiber throughout the resort for our residents. There's, there's some preliminary discussions that, you know, are taking place. There's a lot of, lot to talk about with that. There's a lot of pros and there's some cons there. And of course, we're talking about running fiber individually to each individual lot. I mean, that's more extensive than any of us think. It's a great thing to do, and a lot of communities are converting that way. If you look at our infrastructure, I'm sure you all know more than any of us do, you're pretty limited to either satellite or Cox. And my understanding in the past that we did have some relations with CenturyLink. There was a lawsuit early 2000s that referred to wanting the association to upgrade all of the, the phone lines and whatnot in regards to CenturyLink. The association said no at that point, and CenturyLink said, well, we're not going to, we're not going to put any new lines in. Cox is the only vendor that has maintained any of the coaxial lines throughout the resort, so that is really your only option when it comes down to internet, television, in regard, other than satellite service. A lot of folks are going the route of, you know, Team Mobile, Hot Spots, things along those nature, and they're, they're super successful for them. That's, you know, fantastic. But there could be an opportunity someday down the road to provide affordable fiber to each individual lot. That would, would be much faster and hopefully much more affordable than our Cox services. So it would have to be something that would be an asset to the community, a benefit to the residents. The association here, the common area is we have fiber. We've converted to fiber off of our main line coming into our phone room. So the association's Wi-Fi and our internet is all running off of fiber. But you guys are the ones that are suffering in regards to this internet situation. So we, a couple of years ago, we had conversations with Arizona Wired that kind of fell off the docket, and we just didn't really move forward. At this year's trade show, we had a conversation with a company called Hot Wire. They're another vendor that does fiber, and we're hoping to try to get some conversations started back up again with AZ Wired. So we're hoping by the time we get back into season, we can get this in front of everyone, talk about this a little bit more, and see if this is something that is manageable for the community. If, if, you know, financially it's not manageable for the community, it very well may not happen at this point in time. But we have to understand that the day will come that those coaxial lines in the ground will no longer be any good. And the question will be, will Cox come, will Cox come in and replace them? As of right now, they have, you know, they have, it's a monopoly, they have all your business. They want to continue to have all your business. But we know, I personally don't have Cox, I have CenturyLink, but I know how they are too. Every year, you get an increase, and you know, you're stuck. Where else do you go? So we're trying to battle that. That discussion is going to come down the road, but we do have to look at the ins and outs of it. There's some, some of them look at it of a contractual term, some of them look at it as more of a, a sales approach for the residents. So there's a couple of different ways to look at it, and I think that we're really going to have to, to do our homework before we, we go any further with any kind of fiber. But that, that day's coming. So the question was, is we have AT&amp;T owning the cell tower here, are we engaging with them in regards... them in regards to any fiber? At this point in time, we have not, but that could be a possibility someday down the road if that's, that's something that they're willing to provide us. There's going to be multiple vendors out there that can do this, do this for us. The question's going to be, you know, what's the cost? What's the, where's the bump in the road? There's always going to be a bump in the road somewhere. So we're just trying to figure those, those Ps and Qs out and determine what's going to be the best avenue so we can really, really address the community and say, hey, what do y'all want to do? You know, this isn't going to be a tremendous cost to the association, this is a tremendous agreement for the residents. So it's going to take a lot more discussion.
Yes, I have something to say about the internet and everything. I'm Vicki Griffiths again, 1408. Just recently, well, I've had Cox for years and then I had a special deal where they were giving it to me for $59.99 and I knew that in my datebook I had flagged that May was going to be the cutoff point and so I was curious, okay, what are they going to charge me now? It was over $100. And I, I, I did an online chat and then they said, well, it looks like you're going to need a, a live person. And I said, yes, please, never called, called me back. So then I called again, didn't get anywhere. And so then I remembered that my neighbor down the street, that they had T-Mobile and they signed up for T-Mobile a year and a half ago. So I asked them, how was it working for them? And they said, great, not a hiccup at all. And I thought, well, I have T-Mobile cellphone, so I called T-Mobile and talked to them. I have it now for $40 a month, plus you guys that have Netflix, which I love Netflix because that's my entertainment at night, it's $23 a month. Well, guess what? It's included in the $40 from T-Mobile. So I saved all the way around and I have not had any hiccups. I'm on my computer constantly and I have my TV running at night.
Yeah.
I have not had any issues whatsoever.
We did the exact same thing for the sanitation location. When we run the internet up there, we have a hotspot that's ran off of T-Mobile, super duper affordable. I, I use T-Mobile through my, my phone service and, and it seemed like a couple of years ago, we were talking about improving some services through T-Mobile via cellphone tower on the property. But since then, there has been some improvements with T-Mobile towers in, in our general vicinity because I know my service has improved tremendously over the last couple of years from T-Mobile. So a lot of, a lot of satellite services these days that they're offering and a lot of folks are going that route to have a router. I mean, you can even get, if I'm not mistaken, and Vicki might be able to address this, not just the hotspot, they have an at-home Wi-Fi, I believe it is, through, through T-Mobile and it'll cover your entire home. So wherever you may be, you're going to pick up Wi-Fi off of that, that device in your home.
Yep. So we have Verizon and that's, we have the thing and, and we're only, they locked us into $25 a month for two years. But I think now, I think it's either $35 or $50 a month and it's fine, it's 5G service.
Yeah, it seems like that's really taking off in regards to those, those services.
Yeah, Terry Bader Lot 953. Mike, what happened in the libraries? Because now there's a Roku controller. So the whole package in there changed.
Yes, yes.
Could you explain that?
So a few years ago, I, I want to say it's probably a few years ago, we did a, a major recon of a lot of our phone lines through Cox. We had a huge amount of phone lines that we were paying through, through Cox Communications. And when we brought the upgrade to fiber into the phone room, that ultimately eliminated all of our other phone lines. So now we have one agreement with Cox, one line coming into the entire resort. So when that happened inadvertently, those phones throughout the ballroom and throughout some of these other, other accessory buildings throughout the resort were eliminated, including the television for the library. So Darlene and I looked at each other and said, well, what are we supposed to do? What are we going to do? We ended up buying a Roku, it has a Roku channel on it that has your normal, normal channels on that. But that's where we're at today because we don't have any other option other than running more fiber to that, that location and paying for an additional line through, through Cox Communications, so.
So Mike, does that, so is the box, the box that's up there, does that, is that functional?
Nope.
That's not functional?
Nope.
So it's going directly into the TV?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And I appreciate you saying that because I'm going to pull that box out of there. I'm sure that that's some confusion, being, using that for so many years in the past. So we'll pull that box out of there. It needs to go back to Cox, but they haven't arrived to pick up any of their equipment at this point in time. We hear some relations with Cox and their, their communication. I know their, their name is Cox Communications, but their communications aren't that great, so.
But you did, you did get a lot of channels with Cox that you don't have now.
We did, yeah. We did have a lot more channels with Cox that we don't now. Now, the future may bring, we might be able to do some additional TV services, that, those options are there. We didn't yet because we don't have a larger amount of folks coming into the library to watch the television and it seems to suffice for the time being, so we left it as is. But if that, if that day comes, we can always upgrade that in that location as well.
Maynard from 1621, I have a couple of questions on these palm trees. Have they cut the palm trees around the pool? And they're not cutting them back enough because we'll have leaves hanging down and we'll have all kinds of problems if they don't start cutting it back more.
Twofold. Okay, so we got, the, the pool areas, I saw Monster Tree was over at Town Center Pool this morning and it looks like they were climbing those trees to cut those. So they're working on the common area trees as we speak. And, and we, Brad and I and Darlene and all, we all had a similar conversation yesterday in regards to the height of the tree. We go around and around and, and we've talked about this before and I've had this conversation with Gordon from Monster Tree. We've always pineapple'd, I'm going to refer to it, pineapple-ing our palm trees to, to a really tight height. There's, there's pros and cons about pineapple-ing your palm tree. Pineapple-ing your palm tree is going to last you a little bit longer, but it does stress the tree out a lot more. So when you look at, you know, proper pruning tips, they're, they're wanting to prune it where it's at a 90 degree. That's where the pruning should be. The challenge that we've had in the past and what Gordon continues to stress to the association is that we have improperly maintained our trees for so long that they are used to that practice and we have to break them of that practice. So that's where we're at today, in the sense of when you trim your palm tree up so high, it's going to try to bud out and seed again, you know what I mean? So when, when they're not, they're going dormant there. That two little fronds that are coming off the piece of it on the top here, that's stressing that, that trunk out a lot. And as you see some of our trees that we've trimmed over the years, the trunk will actually get skinnier and skinnier and skinnier the more you cut the top of that tree. So we're trying to maintain the health of the tree, but also maintain the, the appearance of the tree. One of the meetings that we talked about, I think it was maybe one of our last town meetings, we talked about what avenues we might have. We want to make sure our trees are healthy. We, we definitely are making sure that our trees have more water than they have in the past. They, they're, the palm trees on Roy Rogers and Happy Trails Boulevard for, for many years, we're not getting proper water. And there's been feedback, well, they don't need them or they do need them. The reality is they need some water, they don't need a ton of water, but they do need some water. So we're trying to get the trees to a spot that we can make sure they're healthy, but the reality may be, we might have to look at doing a winter trim again. I mean, and that's, that's just the reality. We used to, when I started here at Happy Trails, we did a tree, a trim in November, December, or right, November, December area, and then we did a trim in May-June. That was always the standard forever and it really was fantastic because the appearance of the trees maintained. Last year was the first year we tried a summer trim only and we found that the trees really looked more unsightly through the later season, more than we liked them to. We liked them to be more attractive throughout the season. So we might have to approach that at some point in time, but when I did start, we also gave, they were giving us two trims for 50 bucks. So that was, that was a big difference as well. Now we're spending well over $10,000 in just common area trees that we have here. I have 166 common area palm trees, we have 560 residential palm trees. So talking that big number, the challenge is going to be, since inflation has pushed the, the cost of trimming these trees up so much, are our residents going to get them trimmed again in the winter? Gordon's perception from the professional tree trimming industry is that if we maintain these trees properly and water them properly, we will get to a point where they only need to be trimmed one, once a year in the summer. But we're kind of watching it to see where we end up. Depends on the heat, depends on, you know, what we're dealing with. If we get a really hot summer and it bakes us all the way through August, September, the trees are going to struggle, you know, they're going to, they're going to start browning, you're going to see some fronds. There's a couple of the fronds that you even see on them now that are, are a little brown and that's due to stress on that tree. That's what we're looking at now. So we're trying to get those to a healthy point. Gordon wanted to do some injections and whatnot, we're going to avoid that for now. The cost of any kind of fertilizer injections on palm trees is pretty astronomical considering we have a ton of them. But we do need to approach the health of those trees. We just don't want them, get them to the point where we're going to lose all these palm trees at some, someday down the road.
Let me do this correctly now. Sue D. Lot 1578, thank you Vicki for reminding me. I did want to compliment Monster. We were, my sister and I went to the pool yesterday and a couple of other women were there, this was about 7:30 in the morning. And Monster was starting to work on the three trees there. They were neat and tidy, there was somebody watching all the time to make sure that the guy in the cherry picker was safe. When they moved to the end of the pool where we were, we just went to the other end and they watched out for us. The two finches that were in one of the trees was, were not really happy about this going on, but other than that, they really did a great, nice, neat job.
Wonderful and it's great to hear. And, and what I will add too, is I had another conversation with another resident the other day, same exact conversation, they're not being trimmed high enough. And in the reality is, your palm trees on your individual lot, have them trim them however you like. You know, they're here, you're paying them directly, you're not paying the association to trim your trees. So if you guys have palm trees on your individual lot and you want them pineapple for two fronds, by all means, ask Monster Tree to trim them up to two fronds. But ultimately, we want to see what's going to happen on our common area trees and we do want to trust his, his professionalism in the industry and see what's going to happen here. But we did, we did inform the board that we may have to look at a, a winter trim. Monster Tree is aware of that and he thinks that we're not going to have to, but if we get to a point where the trees aren't slightly and we're coming up to season, I think we're going to have to look into doing it again.
Okay, this is going back to the chuck wagon subject. It's probably a board question. In the contract for finalizing, is the board going to do any updates and redo in the chuck wagon?
If, I don't know if you were at our board meeting, I think we addressed it in the board meeting, maybe not. Anyway, we did, right? We voted on it. We have allocated from our asset improvement fund $500,000 for improving the appearance of Happy Trails. That money, we haven't quite started the project yet, but the money will be going for the pool areas and the chuck wagon and Town Center. So yes, the chuck wagon will be updated. We've had focus groups to talk about what needs to be done and we're going to be moving forward on that.
Fantastic. Another question, has he gotten his liquor license?
He will be pursuing that shortly. He, he needed the, the permanent contract first.
Oh, yeah.
And he will be pursuing that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any, anything on the chat, Michael or?
Where does Chef Peter stand with getting a liquor license? I think that was just answered. All right. Yes.
Rupert Ernest, Lot 712 and 996, and Board of Directors. And I want to do a verbal shout out to Sharon, our new compliance officer, who has done a fabulous job of helping us keep our association in alignment. And so I understand there may be some people that are not happy with that because you might have been tagged, but remember, the majority of the people complained about the neatness and the compliance in the association and so she has done a fabulous job, I just want everybody to know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. You've been an asset to the community.
Maynard from 1621, I'm wondering, whatever happened to, I think it was a year and a half ago, we filled out all those forms and went to those meetings on what the residents wanted. We have never heard what, what the, it turned out to be, it's a secret for some reason. And I'm wanting to know if, they talked about alcohol and they, and they asked the, us people what we thought and nothing's ever come back on any of it. And I'm wondering, what was the, the outcome of some of those questions that were asked?
I, I think, so I think the, the clear answer there, and I, and maybe the board would like to speak to this as well, but I think the clear answer there is that, that long-range plan that was developed and provided to the community was a roadmap, not, not a questionnaire that was saying, this is going to be a, you know, a, a voting session for you to decide on this, this and this. This was a roadmap for the community, for us to use for the future and really understand what we need to do and how to prioritize those things. There's been countless meetings from the Board of Directors in regards to that plan and what was prioritized as, as priority. We know that we had concerns about the aesthetics of some of the locations. We know we had concerns about some of these things that were listed on this, this, but in reference to one specific thing like, like the liquor license, I know that that's kind of the question here. It wasn't a question of how many wanted it and how many did not. Because if you think about it, the reality was, the, the population that even filled that out was not the majority of the community, the community. So it's good to unders, sure, at the time, it's good to understand where we stood and, and see what our problems and our concerns may be, but I don't think that that was a definitive answer, you know? I think that that's kind of the misconception behind it, that the, the form wasn't an answer piece, it was just a roadmap to get us where we needed to be. So, yeah, the results are absolutely presented, they're out there, they're on the website, you can pick a copy of, absolutely.
Let me answer that just a little bit. Mike is absolutely correct. And we have, and we, from that long-range planning, we took it and we took the high groups from that and, and did focus groups. And the focus groups were the landscaping, they were the chuck wagon, they were the, the pools from that long-range planning. From there, I created a landscape committee that's going to start right after the board meeting because we've, we've approved that. We are moving forward, Maynard, with all of that. The challenge that all of us have is things move slowly here because it takes approvals to do that and we only meet once a month. So each time we do that, it takes an approval, it takes, it takes stuff to do that. Yes, we, yes, let me finish. Yes, we approved the $500,000 to, to do that, but then it takes time to get it, we wanted a design, designer to come in and, and put a design together. That takes time to get a designer to come in here and do that. That's something that we're working on to get a designer. We can't do it overnight, we have to get a, we have to go find one and then bring them in here and have them take a look at it. And that takes several days or weeks to get a designer to put a board together and then we have to show you the board. And, you know, all of that takes time. I don't like it, I'm extremely impatient person. And you can ask anybody that, you can ask my husband that. I want it done yesterday, but unfortunately, I'm not the queen here. And so I can't slam the gavel and make it happen. I wish I could, but you guys don't let me do that. So I have to go through the process and the process takes time. And the time takes weeks and the weeks take months and by golly, it's going to happen this summer. It's going to happen this summer. You're going to see some changes this summer, you're going to see some paint this summer, you're going to see some tables this summer, you're going to see some chairs this summer, or my name is Marie Besch and by golly.
Well, I understand it takes time, but when you But when you're talking about, you have this contract with the restaurant, and you're saying that we don't have any control over him getting a liquor license. We don't care if he gets one or not. And I think it was asked, really, a definite question on that. We had all these stickers. And they said, well, put your stickers where you want it. Well, at the meeting I was at, this one woman put all her stickers on the liquor, wanting the liquor. And so I put half of mine on no liquor. But my question is, why hasn't, there should have been something at this meeting. I don't know what the outcome was. How many people voted to have liquor? How many people voted not to have liquor? And that's what I'm talking about. The board has not come forward with any of that, you know? And I don't know why they're afraid to let that go or come out with it when someone asks the question. I mean, everything you said did not pertain to what I asked. I asked, what was, what did the people say? And that was what we were, people. And we were asked to vote, and we voted. Now, we have never gotten back what the vote turned out to be. Do we want liquor? Do we want, do we want to remodel, spend $500,000 remodeling the restaurant? Or do we want to spend some money out on the Town Center out here? It's got all kinds of cracks in it. We're letting that go for some reason. We did all the asphalt. But we seem, we stop in the middle of things. Like the parking lot out here, that should have been from the entrance off of Roy Rogers. It's all cracked up. They didn't do anything with that. You know, and I'm just wondering, how come we can't get some of this stuff fixed before we start putting money into the restaurant to get this place to look nicer? Thank you.
Jan Shodin, Lot 147. When we voted a couple of years ago or longer, it was whether we wanted to establish a bar area in the resort. And people voted no. And that was totally different than having it in a restaurant in a controlled situation where people aren't going to go hang out there just to drink like they wanted to establish years ago. This is if you want to have a glass of wine with your dinner, something like that. And I'm sure it'll be a totally controlled situation.
Going back to NC1. Are we going to get new tables? Those tables been here since it was established. And they're all rocking and rolling like the old people are.
The interior tables you're referring to, right? Not the, not the pool furniture, the inside tables. Yes. So we haven't had specific conversation about those tables. But I'll tell you this. Darlene and I will run over there and we'll look at the, I know we shampooed the chairs because they were really rough looking. So the housekeepers got all those chairs out and shampooed them all this last season. But we'll go over there and check them out and see where we're at with them. Maybe it's time to take a peek at some of those and see what needs to happen. Either they need to be maintained, repaired, or we can salvage those, or they just need to be replaced. But we'll go inspect them and while it's down right now and see what's going on. The old tables, but new chairs. Sure, sure. Yeah, we'll go look at them. We'll take some photographs of them and see what can be done. The question was, are there board meetings during the summer? Our next board meeting is going to be June 13th. That is next Thursday. And it's going to be in this room at 1:00 PM. We also have it virtual. It'll be recorded. So if anybody would like to be on virtually, that will be as well. We will not have a board meeting in July, but we will carry a board meeting in August and September, if I'm not mistaken, for the rest of the season. So that will continue us into the new season, and we'll go from there.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, oh, one more.
It's a thank you to Mike and the yard, the landscape crew. They've been working really diligently for fixing up the wash back off of Nellie Bell. It was all washed out there. And they came in there and they did their rocks. And so thank you to Hector and his crew. They did great, they're very courteous. They cleaned up some lots that, you know, it was all messed up and stuff. They were very diligently. And there's still some more to be done, but so far, so good.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you to you and your landscape crew.
Thank you. And on that note, you know, I just want to say thank you to all of our staff. I mean, all of our staff make this go around on a day-to-day basis. If it weren't for our landscapers, our housekeepers, our maintenance crew, our patrol crew, all of our office staff, Darlene and I's job would not be possible. We work as a team here, we work as a group. We've had amazing staff here, and that's why this place is so amazing. These folks that work here, they've been here for, a lot of them have been here for many, many years. And their passion is in this community because they love it here. So we're really proud of our staff, really proud of the things that have been done. And they are all rock stars on a day-to-day basis. So if you see them out there in the heat, working all day long, stop and say hello, say thank you. They're just wonderful folks and they're here for you guys. So we really appreciate the kind words.
Okay, any other questions before we sign off? Planning session will be today at 1 o'clock in the Manzanita Room. Yes, yes. Okay, everyone have a great afternoon and we will see you next time. Thank you.